I call to order this January 23rd, 2024, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the rule to establish a quorum and read the Metro Cable statement?
Good morning, Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, January 26th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda or off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will also manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov and your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as strong.
That takes us to our public comments relating to matters not on the agenda. Again, those are items not on the agenda and we will take 30 minutes. If at that time we have not exhausted all of the items not on the agenda and the speaker slips, we will then take the remainder at the conclusion of all time matters in the afternoon. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
We do. We have two off-agenda comments and I'm going to call Grant Williams.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I'm here to ask about my money that you guys stole. I just want my money. Here's another thing. I want you guys to listen to my voicemails or clean out your ears because somebody's trying to hurt me and then my voice message caught that person's voice. So, listen carefully. I'm going to let you listen to all these voicemails. Okay?
Enter your password. Then press pound. You have 32 saved messages. Saved message.
Put it closer to the microphone.
To replay this message.
And I'm going to remind you, you have two minutes.
Okay. You heard that, right? Okay, listen. Are you there? Okay, well, this person is saying that... Okay, let's play.
Well, uh, okay, let's go hear it.
He...
To replay this message.
Lord have mercy. Okay.
Press seven. Well, uh, okay, let's go hear it. To replay this message.
Okay, here we go.
Well, uh, okay, let's go hear it.
Yeah, he didn't want the person to... For me to hear that person. Okay, now let's keep going.
Press nine. Message saved. Saved message.
Hi, Grant. This is Brenda calling from Anthem, Bucos. Um, I'm just calling to, uh...
Well, that's where all the medical... Really farting, all that comes into play. Okay, she's trying to be funny. Okay, let's skip that.
Message saved. Saved message.
Hey, Grant, this is Tony, speaking with Sports Management Worldwide. You submitted an application...
Well, he wanted to give me a job. I deserve a job. I should be a job as a coach and where the kids will be calling me.
Just give me a call back at 9713.
Message saved. Saved message.
Hi, Mr. Williams, it's Elizabeth, uh, calling you back from Sacramento Housing, uh, Section 8.
Just part of the scam.
So, I'm...
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Your time is up. I appreciate you coming down this morning.
Wait a minute, my timer's up two minutes already?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Lord have mercy.
Thirty-eight messages is a lot to get in.
Okay, I just... I want my records, the records that, you know...
Thank you, sir.
You all know what I'm talking about.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Charles.
I want my money. I want my money. I want my family's money.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
My grandson, my daughter, we want my money.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, my other public, please.
Good morning.
Morning, sir.
I got a call last week from a lady that was formerly homeless, that had her exit from homelessness last week after a year, about a year of going through some stuff and trying to get connected to services and my helping a couple other people trying to help her and connect her where we can. And I want to say it was actually mostly Hope Cooperative that was able to help her with that. She thinks it was me and a couple other people, but really, once she got connected to Hope Cooperative is when she really was able to get through the system and work what she needed to do. It's a lady and her whole family, multiple kids in multiple schools. And it was really difficult to start the process, but once she got with Hope Cooperative, everything basically went the way that it should have. So, they're a great organization. I saw errands on here later, so I just wanted to get that out there, that they're great and they have a lot of great staff. The other side of the homeless stuff, this weekend I got, had some conversations with some people and other advocates and homeless people directly that people are on waitlists for low-barrier shelters and aren't able to get in. They're keeping vacancies at some of the low-barrier shelters and they're moving people from other places, sweeping people and putting them in these low-barrier shelters in other places in the city or the county. And I don't know if that's true. I only know what I hear and it's definitely what homeless people believe, is that they can be waitlisted on a shelter and not get in, but then people are getting swept into these shelters. So, it's something worth knowing, at least on your guys' end, that within the homeless community, people want to get in and are not being allowed in while the city, or it's the Sacramento City, that's doing sweeps. And within the homeless community, they are saying that the city is purposefully keeping vacant shelters, vacant sheds and other things so that the city can enforce no camping downtown. So, it's, you know, worth you guys knowing that, that the homeless people are basically not even going to start applying to be on waitlist for shelters at this point because they think it's pointless.
Thank you, Charles.
That concludes your public comments for off-agenda.
Okay, next item, please.
So, now we move on to your consent matters, excuse me, items two through 39. I have one comment for item number two. This is to adopt an ordinance amending 2.100.080 of the Sacramento County Code related to management time. You waive reading on this on January 9th and that concludes my notes.
Thank you very much. Is there any member of the board that would like to address an item on the consent calendar? Seeing and hearing none, is there any member of the public that would like to address the board on an item that's on the consent calendar?
We do not have any public comments.
Okay, is there a motion?
No consent.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Desmond, second by Vice Chair Serna. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Our first presentation is for item number 40. This is the Presentation of Resolution congratulating Martin Luther King Jr. Celebrations Sacramento on their 25th Anniversary Gala.
Thank you. Would Vince Miles, Tony Greenwell, and Michael Alklay join me at the podium? Members of the board and public, this is an annual presentation that we make and it's something that I hope will continue to be an annual presentation for years to come. I'd like to start with a few wherethes from the resolution congratulating Martin Luther King Jr. Celebrations Sacramento on their 25th Anniversary Gala. Whereas the life and work of Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. serves as an enduring testament to the power of peaceful protest and social activism in the face of injustice, his legacy continues to resonate deeply in shaping the race relations landscape of the United States and his commitment to civil rights. Nonviolent resistance and community service remains an inspiration today. Whereas the County of Sacramento recognizes and honors Dr. Dorothy and Jerry Enimoto, as well as the late Congressman Robert T. Matsui, who was honorary co-chair at the time, for their, at the time of its inception, for their commitment and dedication that gave birth to an annual celebration, turning a challenging moment in history into an opportunity for positive change and community building. And whereas this year proudly marks the silver jubilee of this celebration, which has become a cornerstone for the Sacramento region's cultural tapestry, fostering a sense of belonging, understanding, and shared responsibility among its diverse residents. And whereas this event has consistently exemplified its commitment to community service through the annual recognition of the Robert T. Matsui Community Service Award honorees, individuals whose selfless contributions have made a lasting impact on the Sacramento community. And whereas this year, the MLK Celebration Sacramento will host the 25th Gala at the Sacramento State University on Saturday, January 27th, 2024, to honor Dr. King's unwavering dedication to making the world a better place and the legacy that lives on. Now therefore be it resolved that the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, County of Sacramento, State of California hereby commends its organizers, volunteers, and sponsors who have tirelessly worked to ensure the success of this event year after year, fostering and promoting social justice, equality, and collective responsibility. And congratulations to MLK Celebration Sacramento for a quarter of a century of uniting the Sacramento community together to pay tribute to the legacy of a man whose ideals remain as just, just as relevant and impactful in 2024 as they did in the 1960s. Thank you, and with that? Please.
First of all, I want to say thank you on behalf of the MLK Committee and my colleagues in honor of Dr. King, in honor also of those of you that heard about his son Dexter that passed away yesterday, if you didn't know. So, on behalf of the King family, again, with the MLK Committee, we really thank you for this wonderful award. We encourage you to attend this wonderful celebration to honor the legacy of Dr. King if you have not been. If you have been before, we encourage you to come back again. So, once again, I just want to say thank you and everybody, I just wish you, I wish everyone well. Thank you.
Thank you, Vince. Vince Miles is our President of the MLK Committee. He's standing next to Tony Greenwell, a board member on the MLK Committee, and both have served for probably 20 years plus and know the founders like I do, Dr. Dorothy and Jerry Enimoto. We are excited for this 25th Anniversary event. We know how supportive... Supervisor, see, I almost promoted you. Supervisor Kennedy has been... Yeah, well, Supervisor Kennedy, Supervisor Desmond, Serna, Supervisor Frost, Pat, I know we're going to get you engaged in our MLK Committee in future years, but we're excited to be here today to collect this resolution honoring 25 years. But the most exciting part of our 25-year celebration is we, the MLK Committee, has decided to make a scholarship fund at Sacramento State in honor of our 25th Anniversary. And can you guess how much we're going to cede that scholarship with? Anybody? All right, $25,000. So, that's our gift back to this community amongst the tens of thousands of dollars that we have given and grants over the last 25 years. We're also going to make a surprise addition, because this community has been so generous, to that fund come Saturday night, but you have to come and hear to see how much we're going to augment that $25,000 with. But Supervisor Kennedy, thank you so much for recognizing all the good things that this community does. We know we're fraught with a lot of issues, but there's so much good in Sacramento that I'm a proud resident of this community and we continue to do good things. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And... Sorry, last thing, I totally keep this short, but this year, first time ever, we have commemorative tickets. You keep them for another 25 years. I'm sure they'll be as worth, worth as much as a Beanie Baby. So, you have one for each of you. Hope you'll frame it, keep it on your desk. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and Michael, thank you for your, your energy every year in doing this. You're fantastic and you're welcome to come back and speak if you'll say those words again anytime you like.
Which Senator or President? Thank you so much. I think she wants a quick...
Yes, yes, yes. Get you in the middle there, Vince. There we go. Thank you.
And our website's on behalf, so if anybody wants to make a donation to the scholarship, we have it all backed up.
The man never stops.
Oh. I may have to have to come.
Okay, next item is item 41. This is the Presentation of Resolution honoring Ann Edwards on the occasion of her retirement.
So, with great mixed emotions that we introduce this, I will, what I'm going to do is normally I would give some kind of a statement and probably go to the podium at such an important moment in the history of Sacramento County. However, I believe I have said enough on the subject and Metro Cable has asked me not to speak today for fear of what I might say, but, you know, I'll just start and I'm really going to hand this to the board because I have had opportunity to speak on behalf of my colleagues, just that, Ann, I think you know how much you mean to this county, you know how much you mean to this community, and you're going to be sorely missed. Would the board like to discuss this at this time?
Sure, I'll chime in. So, I can't help but reflect back on the circumstances as they were that brought you to this board and to this position, Ann, and it was a, it was a very, very difficult time for a lot of different reasons. And I think as has been stated many times, you not only were able to introduce the stability that we needed as an organization, but certainly you were the ignition for much-needed culture change in Sacramento County. And for, I think I speak on behalf of all of the dedicated public servants, all 13,000 plus, that you're, not just your style of leadership, but your focus on the priorities that affect this community and affect those civil servants is going to be very missed. But we also believe strongly too that it has set in motion the continued change that we need to stay focused on to make sure that the vision that you and my colleagues have shared in terms of making sure that this is not just a great place to build a career and serve the public, but it's also, again, an organization that has the public's trust and, and is really, you know, very committed to excellence as, as we read on the lapel pins that you've given us in terms of service delivery to the people that we, that we represent and to the people that we serve. So, you should be very proud of that work and look back fondly on those challenges, but also the fact that you've left an indelible mark on the history of this county. So, wish you well in retirement, much deserved, and don't be a stranger.
Supervisor Frost.
Ann, I've said a lot, so I'll try not to say so much today, but I just want to say that you came, you said what you would do, and you did it. And you did it in the timeline that you said you would do it. And even though it was a blow to, to hear that you'd be leaving, we're grateful that you were successful in, I'm not going to, I hate to just say changed the culture because I don't think that's the most important thing that you did. I think in order to be a great leader, an inspiration, only an inspirational leader will have people who will follow them, you know, people don't follow you unless they respect and trust you. And so, you, you instilled trust in that position that you're in, that David's assuming, and, and you earned the love in the hearts of the staff at the county and I'm hearing it all over the region that you're loved by leaders from all over the region. And so, I want to thank you for that and acknowledge you for that. I also want to say that I'm really gratified that you were able to build a high, highly qualified team. Those of us that serve in, in office, we know that so much of what we do is better because we have smart people around us and you were able to also bring that support to us as a board and I want to thank you for that. And I want to also wish you all the best in your retirement and congratulate David and say I'm really grateful that you're here. I'm looking forward to working with you. I know you're going to be every bit as wonderful as Ann and so, Ann, best of wishes for a great, I don't want to call it golden because I don't think you're that old. So, these are just the next, this is your, just the next step in the journey, a great next step in the journey. So, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, and it was just a wonderful retirement party that you had on Thursday and I don't think there's anything certainly that I could, I could say that would top what was said there. A lot of love in that room towards you, Ann. You have profoundly impacted so many people's lives, including my own, in just a short period of time. You've been a friend, an amazing source of inspiration for me personally, certainly a plus that you're a constituent of mine and understand the unique challenges of the unincorporated communities. But just your, I mean, you hit all the notes perfectly, whether that's internally in terms of the culture change, creating a more inclusive environment in the county where everybody feels valued, everybody's opinion feels valued. And then externally on the, on the community services side, the social services side, and your fiscal stewardship. I love the, the term that our, our chair described, used to describe you, a conservative bleeding heart, I think it was. That was, that was great. But it took me a while, I was upset for a while that you were leaving, even though you told me you'd stay for much longer, but I realized that really, I realized really it's because, you know, you wanted to go out on a high note with the last chair that you had a full year serving with. And I understand that. So, I can, I can certainly understand that and, and appreciate it, that sentiment notwithstanding my colleague here. But really, Ann, you, you are, I hope you stay in touch. I hope I'm able to stay in touch with you. I have a lot of positions on boards and commissions, you know, in District 3 and would love to see you serve on one of those. And then I was actually asked by, so I hope I can do this now, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Asked by the secretaries to provide these to you because getting back to just your impact internally in Sacramento County on everybody from, from whatever position they're in, in the clerk staff, to department heads, everybody in between, you had an impact on people's lives and, and they loved serving in Sacramento County because of you. So, let me just give these to you on behalf of the secretaries who, with all the board offices.
And I asked Renee to present this, but she was...
Thank you, Chair. There are seven stages of grief and I haven't quite reached acceptance yet, but I'm, I'm getting close every day and, and like the chair said, I've, I've said a lot about this already. And so, I will simply say that I didn't get to work with you as long as I would have liked. According to the chair, it's longer than most people would like to on the, looking back the other way. But anyway, I, you know, leaders come along for a reason or a season and I think you withstood both, your season. And they don't create followers, they create more leaders. And so, I think you recognized the jewel that you had internally and then you put in a cadre of folks around you that are going to carry on the good work that you started. And, you know, sometimes pushing the snowball off the hill is the, the hardest move and once it starts to gain momentum, people maybe forget what started it in motion in the first place. And I can tell you that I will never forget and never underestimate the critical importance for that reason during your season. And thank you and wish you all the best and I know you're moving on to a new chapter and wish you well in that and anything I can do to assist you, I'd be happy to do it.
Thank you. Mr. Villanueva.
Well, Ann, we've had quite a great career together and I wish you the best of luck in your retirement and thank you for everything you've done. Most importantly, you have such a great impact on so many people's lives, you can kind of see a sample of folks behind you that support you. And most of all, I appreciate you building this fantastic team that we have also sitting behind us and I just want to wish you the best of luck and, and you've created such a great atmosphere for all of us to move forward and understanding that we will continue to charge that forward and make you proud of what we do going forward. But again, congratulations on your retirement and best of luck and to you and Tom, I know Tom is here somewhere hiding, but congratulations.
Okay, before we have Ann come up for the final word, I just wanted to be able to present this, get up here, this resolution on behalf of the... I, I, I want to present this resolution on behalf of the board and the last chair for you to serve under. I'm not going to read all of the wherethes because most of it goes on to describe an illustrious career, so I just really wanted to focus on two that I think really define Ann in her tenure as not only a county employee, but specifically as the CEO of our county. Whereas Ann was appointed county executive in 2021, she was the first woman appointing, appointed county executive in Sacramento County and pursued the primary goals of providing stability, building trust within the outside and the inside organizations, and transforming the county's culture. And whereas Ann leaves an unparalleled legacy of uncompromising integrity, steadfast focus, sound decision-making, visionary leadership, and resolute kindness toward all. It doesn't say more than that, so, Ann, thank you.
Thank you all very much. Thank you for this recognition and your kind words. This last week has been a bit overwhelming having all these conversations, but I can't tell you how much I appreciate all of it. First, I want to thank, express thanks to the department heads and my executive team. As you all mentioned, they are really a rock star team. I mean, they are just amazing. You're all going to be in wonderful hands. It's really the most incredible group of professionals whom I've ever worked with. They are all consummate professionals as well as really good people and that matters. I have a soft spot in my heart for all of you. Thank you. I also have a soft spot for all county employees. I am routinely humbled by the commitment and professionalism of all staff. I certainly have not met them all, but I've met many and I'm so very proud of all the work that they do. When I started my career with the county many years ago, someone close to me said, "Oh, you're going to be a government worker." And there was a bit of a negative connotation to that, but I was able to very quickly share how hard government workers actually work and I'm just so proud of all of them. I want to thank all of you. You know, this has been a surprising and amazing opportunity to serve as your county executive. As you know, I've said before, it wasn't something I wanted to do and yet really grew to love it, so I thank you for that. Chair Kennedy, I appreciate your brevity. You easily make your point of view in very few words. I also appreciate your friendship and your humor does not hurt my feelings. You must have known I was going to comment on that. Supervisor Serna, I've known you the longest and have appreciated our years of working together. I really value your ability to negotiate a deal at the DIAUS. You've done that on multiple occasions and brokered solutions that work for everyone, so thank you for that. Supervisor Desmond, although we've only worked together for three years, I really appreciate our friendship. I appreciate our... You guys do an incredible job, you're all amazing. I also want to thank D-Tech for all the behind-the-scenes work that they do here in Chambers. And I could go on and on and on, there are so many people I want to thank, and I'd be here all day. So, I'm not mentioning too many names because I would inevitably leave somebody out and hurt someone's feelings, and I never want to do that. Just know that if we work together, I have a true appreciation for who you are and what you do, and this includes all of our staff and community partners. I want to thank my family and friends, many of whom were here last week and couldn't be here today, but I do need to thank my husband, Tom Lewis, because I could not have done this without his love and support. Thank you, and I love you. My grandsons are in school today, so they can't be here, but I really cannot wait to spend more time with Jackson, Emmett, and Oscar, who bring me just incredible joy. Finally, I want to thank my parents, Bob and Leah Edwards, who are no longer with us, but I am who I am because I was shaped by them. And although I am ready for this next chapter, I'm really going to miss all of you, and all of you. I just can't thank you enough for how warmly I was welcomed when I came into the position. I just didn't know what to expect, and you all, all of you made it easy to do my job, so thank you very much from the bottom of my heart.
Would the board please join me down in the well for photo? You too, Ann.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move adoption of the resolution.
We already did under consent.
Oh, there we go. Want to make sure.
I don't know that I have any interest with. Don't move, Ann, stand. Well, you should get in. Get in there. Get in there, girl.
Where are you going, Ann? You're still on the clock. All right. Next item, please.
Okay, Mr. Chair, we are right on time for item 42. This is the Public Safety and Justice Agency Advisory Committee Annual Update.
Mr. Jones, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair and Board members. Eric Jones, Deputy County Executive of Public Safety and Justice Agency. This is exceedingly unfair that I have to follow that resolution. I'm also sensing a theme of brevity that I heard, so I'll do my best. So, this is an update today before you on recap of the history of the Public Safety and Justice Agency as well as the agency's advisory committee, and to go over the work that the committee has done over the last year. So, a history of the Public Safety and Justice Agency and as well as the advisory committee. August of 2021, the board created the Public Safety and Justice Agency, which is, was a restructure of really oversight of some of the county departments, criminal justice system-related. So, direct oversight of the public defender's office, conflict criminal defender's office, coroner's office, and the probation department, as well as your and the CEO's liaison to a lot of the other criminal justice agencies such as, or commissions, the Community Review Commission, the Community Corrections Partnership, the Criminal Justice Committee, the Inspector General, the Superior Court, Law Library, and of course, working a lot with county council on the Mays Consent decree. Also then, a resolution was passed for an advisory committee for this agency to provide community voice into all of those matters. Then in February of 2022, the Public Safety and Justice Agency actually began. June of that same year, the advisory committee was approved with the charter. That summer, membership applications were received and reviewed, members were selected, and then in October, the advisory committee held its very first meeting. So, this last year of 2023 was the first full year of the committee and their work. So, here is the purpose of this advisory committee. It's to engage with the community, is to provide an ongoing forum for voice within the community for public safety and justice agencies' matters, to include but not limited to the jail population reduction plan as well as recidivism reduction efforts, and to consider racial and health equity issues. We have had discussions about the racial disparities in the criminal justice system. We've had presentations by the Alliance for Safety and Justice, locally by OnTrack of the Blueprint for Community Health and Justice, their report, their project, rather. We provided DEI training, and we look forward to working with the new chief DEI officer in this work as well. So, here's the structure of this committee. It's up to 15 members representing all five board of supervisors districts, and it's a diverse cross-section of our community. Here you see a list of the groups and disciplines represented. Membership applications were reviewed by the Alliance and Safety and Justice, and then the CEO or designee, myself as well, made those final appointments. They're for two years, and the deputy county executive of that agency, myself, serves as the committee chair. Regarding when we meet, we meet in person quarterly in the evenings out at the Department of Health Services on East Parkway. These meetings are closed to the public. This is because we were able to garner open and honest dialogue, and we've heard feedback from crime survivors as well, they have very personal stories, so that is the reason for that. And with the committee members, we also have listening, and they're available for questions, are really the department heads or their executive team of all of the agencies that I mentioned that work with the Public Safety and Justice Agency, as well as our social services agencies, because we have so much overlap in the work we do. And so, Deputy County Executive Katari, as well as her key staff, are typically at these meetings as well because of the, the same goal we all have together. And the scope of these meetings are specific to the, what control the Public Safety and Justice Agency has. Often, other discussions do come up, such as housing or other things. We do have those discussions, but we also then encourage them for, for deeper dialogue on those issues, that there are a variety, in fact, 70-plus, other commissions, boards, and committees within the county. So, we're not duplicative of efforts, but we do discuss a lot of the issues where they do overlap with crime, incarceration, and services for those throughout the county. We also have monthly virtual meetings, we call office hours with our staff. We have periodic presentations and feedback always we can receive, not just from the committee members, but also from the general public at the email here you see. And final slide is going to go over the committee activities, so really the discussions we've had over the last year. A lot of it has been around the Mays Consent decree and the jail population reduction plan. So, the input received from the committee, much of it was incorporated into those 33 planned items that you've heard about before for the county's jail population reduction plan, as well as a separate but follow-up dialogue on the metrics and measurements that should be used to gauge the, how well we're doing in each of those areas. We've also had quite a few discussions about the county's pre-trial release programs and support services. As I mentioned, we've had DEI training with the, with the group, and we've had a, again, that presentation by OnTrack about community health and justice. And we spent quite a bit of time on understanding what's known as the sequential intercept model that again overlaps between social services as well as public safety and justice. The intercept model is basically zero through five, all points along interactions with the community member and where services or interaction into the criminal justice system may occur. Intercept zero is really the community services, and that's the point where we hope that folks get the help they need, they might be in mental health crisis or some other situation where perhaps law enforcement don't have to be involved. And then intercept one is a first law enforcement contact, but hoping some sort of deflection or diversion can occur there so they don't have to enter into the actual court and criminal justice system. So, we've been using the intercept model to really help define the work of where we can provide input. Our next step is to really get, take part in gaining consensus by this group on a definition of community safety. Really, what does community safety mean? We talk often about shared public safety, which it's not just law enforcement, it's not just incarceration, but it's about what makes the community healthy, well-being, a public health framework, crime survivors at the center, reducing system harms and making the system work. And I just want to thank all of the members of the committee because it is, it is work, and they're volunteering their time, and we have some great discussions in those advisory committee meetings. So, with that, I'm available for any questions from the board.
Before we go to questions of the board, are there any members of the committee here today, Mr. Jones?
Not today.
Okay, great. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, are there any members of public?
We do not have any public comments.
Okay, I will just say that, you know, I've been in close contact, and I'm sure my colleagues have as well, with members of the committee, and of all of the committees that we appoint to, I have had, never had as much positive feedback as far as the way that the committee's been operated, the information that's been shared, the knowledge that's been shared, the training. It's, it's true.